Good evening, welcome to the Newmarket School Board meeting on February 22nd, 2018. We'll start the meeting off with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm just gonna do a little switch up. We're gonna do student reports, then we're going to do super kids, and then we're going to listen to Ryan LaBassar, if everybody's okay with that, and then we can do superintendent report afterwards and all that. All right, Catherine? Oh, why don't we do public comment first? We have somebody. Well, I'm not used to having somebody.
Amy Rossi, and I'm here as president of the Newmarket Teachers Association. And in your packets, you have the draft calendar for this coming school year. And you also have a memorandum of agreement that I just wanted to tell you about. What this memorandum of agreement does is it gives you just a formal look at what the votes were by the members of the association. The first item on there just formalizes that we voted to change the calendar that was originally proposed back to the five contracted professional development days. The second vote we took was to add back into the calendar three half-days, three release days for students, which would then be full days, counted as full days. And then we would be using the second half of the day for professional development, and it's the ideal time for our paraprofessionals to receive professional development. So we voted to put those in. So this is also in your packet, and we'd like you to take a look at that and hopefully come to agreement to sign that, and we can sign off on that and formalize the changes. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to note that when we get to it, the calendar is just a discussion item tonight, it is not an action item, so the board has time to review all of those pieces.
Thank you.
All right, Catherine, would you like to give your student report?
So at the junior senior high school, we had a poetry out loud event a few weeks ago on February 13th. Ashley Alvarado placed first place, Catherine Day was second, and Chloe McKinney placed third. We have winter break starting February 26th and going through March 5th. We had a junior at the high school, Maddie Guyer, who went to a national fencing tournament in Tennessee and did really well, which was really cool. And then this week, Newmarket is supporting Cam Russell, a Newmarket alumni, who has started a challenge to raise money for leukemia. Tomorrow, we're wearing orange and donating, and those who are 18 or above can get swabbed for bone marrow transplant matches at Great Bay Community College on February 26th, which is a cool way to support someone who has been a member of the school and a family who's a part of the community as well. At the elementary school, Read Across America Week happens when we get back from vacation. Monday is Fox in Wacky Socks Day. Tuesday is Wear Green. Wednesday is Mismatched Clothes. Thursday is Cat in the Hat, and Friday is Oh, the Places You'll Go, so dressing like a future career. For sports, the indoor track division meet was a few weeks ago, and Cam Mooney placed third, which was pretty cool. He's a senior. And awards nights for that will be March 6th at 6:00 PM. Swimming, we had two students make it to the state meet, and that was Lucas Russell, who placed seventh in the one-meter diving, and James Robillard, who also made it to states and placed 11th in the 500-yard and 16th in the 200-yard. For boys' basketball, they finished their season with a record of 14-4. Girls' basketball finished their season with a record of 10-8. And hockey currently stands with a record of 5-12, their last game being February 24th at Bo at 3:30 PM. And I think that's all for me.
Any questions for Catherine? All right, so then we can move on to super kids? I think so. Principal Pine is here.
Good evening. We'd like to take an opportunity to share with you some of the work that three of my teachers have been doing this year. They've been working on piloting Super Kids, which is a reading program that's targeted for grades K through 2. So we want to kind of give them an opportunity with their experience with the program as well. This is the program we talked about earlier in the year during our budget cycle, and we're looking to adopt this program and put it into place for all teachers, K through 2, starting this coming fall, so fall of '18. So Chris Andruski is gonna kind of start this off. He'll be seeing Melissa Flinsky and Lisa O'Brien and Catherine Butler as well, who they really jumped on board this, and I can't praise them enough for being willing to do this.
So the three teachers went in for training, and they're going to train the rest of the staff?
Well, part of it, they receive training in the summer through Super Kids. Once we work with Super Kids, Super Kids will be back down here to train the rest of our staff, and they will have an opportunity to be there as well to pick up some extra tidbits as well.
All right.
Great.
Good evening. I'm gonna take you through just the timeline of how we got here, and I will also take you through the criteria of why we chose Super Kids. So this work really started back in June 2016. As I was starting as the assistant superintendent, I was meeting with grade levels at the elementary school, and one of the themes that came up was, we don't have a dedicated reading program that we can use. The program that we were using was outdated, the materials were outdated, the resources were outdated, and it really took away time from our teachers to be able to teach as they were trying to find resources to supplement what was happening in their classroom. So that wasn't just in kindergarten, that was kindergarten through 5th grade. So it resonated with me in June. And then when I sat down in curriculum meetings, you know, in the spring, they kept hammering this idea. Reading is so important at the elementary, you know, pre-K through 2 levels, so that our kids are prepared to read by 3rd grade, that we needed something to support our teachers. So we began the research, and we started looking in the winter of 2016-17, and we started looking at programs from around the seacoast. We sent teachers out to multiple schools, Rochester, Epping, Exeter, Newington. And Newington is where Super Kids was being used. And our teachers went there, and they said, this is the program we want. They came back and gave us the pros and cons. Looked at three other programs from the other schools, and we listed out the pros and cons through a K through 2 meeting, K through 3 meeting, excuse me, and it was unanimous that Super Kids met the needs for a couple of reasons. It incorporated reading and writing together, which we do separately now. It had a consistent message, and it had ability-based, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next slide under criteria. But the big part is that the work we have been doing with Dr. Carol Tolman, it supported it. And that's what resonated with the teachers, is this is what Carol has talked to us about. This is how we make gains. And that's been three years of work, this is the fourth year with Carol, so that was something we wanted to take into consideration. So that brought us up to this year. These three ladies behind me were generous to give up their time and come in in the summer and be trained through Super Kids, and they've piloted this year. So the kindergarten, they don't have any other program they wouldn't know any better or different, but in 1st and 2nd grade, they've been using programs, and I know, at least in Catherine, we'll talk about why they like this program when they get up here, but their kids haven't never had something like this, and they're gonna talk about the gains they're seeing. So they've been piloting up to this point. At a staff meeting in January, they got up along with Principal Pine and talked about this program and why we wanted to adopt it, and it was a unanimous decision at that time after presenting to the staff that this is the program that we wanted to pilot, that we wanted to implement for next year. And when we did that, we wanted a program that was research-based, which Super Kids is, that meets the needs of all of our students, and I know they're gonna show you some of the resources and supplements. It meets kids at all different reading levels, within the class, above a class, below a class. Again, it supported the work of Dr. Carol Tolman. It has a writing program that goes with it, so in the future, the program, we will not have to pay for a separate writing program, which we do now. So budgetary-wise, it made sense, because this incorporated that writing sequence as well. Another huge factor was that it has online resources for parents, teachers, and students. So as they get older, you know, there is the web capability to continue to practice this. And as I mentioned, and this was the one that really sold it for me, this program allowed kids, for students, to work at their own level. You've heard me up here before, personalization, individualization. This program does it. So it met all six checkmarks of our criteria.
What is research-based mean?
So it's out there that different educators in the field have looked into this program as well as other programs. What Works Network has rated it through studies that it does improve reading scores, so it's research-based that it's out there. We use that quite a bit for justification for Title I funding, that you're using programs that have been research-based, that it's making something up, that it's gonna show benefits, so that's what we mean by research-based.
In this era where we're hearing rumors that cursive is going away, when you say writing program, is this a handwriting program, or is this composition?
Composition, yeah. It does have some handwriting, but that composition piece.
And then I have a stupid question. So if this is Title I, does that mean maybe we can get some of our funding back?
No.
Our funding?
Yeah, that's determined by the federal government.
Okay, and that was the...
And it's based primarily on census data, so statewide and nationally around free reduced lunch populations is the driving force behind that piece.
So any questions before I hand it on to Melissa?
Melissa? All right, Catherine. We just have all some materials, I guess, we can sort of pass out to you guys and kind of look and listen as we talk. Also, just makes things a little bit more real. I don't have a lot for everyone at the same time, but we can probably share. This is just some of the kindergarten stuff that we have, that we're using every day in a lot of different ways. And I apologize if I repeat things, but I also think that good things should be repeated, so I'm just gonna say some things that Chris already told you about, try some things that you guys will be saying too. I'm here to kind of talk about a lot of the components that we have, and again, you're looking right at them. They're pictures, illustrations, they're real pictures, they're all tying together. What we have is a program that aligns with the Common Core standards, which, again, it's easy to see as it laid out from beginning of the year to the end of the year. You can see where we are in January, what we're doing, so it also allows for other support people, other specialized people to come in. They can see what we're doing, what our goal is at that time with that lesson. So it's just really clear, and it's systematic, it just builds upon and builds upon. And again, if anyone were to come in another grade level, they can see where we're at, what our goal is, what we're doing. Again, also, Chris said that the work that we have done, and we've done a lot of work with Carol Tolman, but the components of this program really supports what she has done, what she's taught us, what we've learned. You know, for example, the vocabulary, she had said that vocabulary is a really great tool. We need to be using language, using words, using stories, read aloud. And this program, especially in kindergarten, I find that the rich language, the vocabulary, to me, I'm shocked sometimes I see the words that are being used, but it's so good for the kids at kindergarten level to be seeing this, and they know what it means, they can put meaning to it, so it all kind of ties in. I know we've all talked to from K-1 and 2, all the pieces that they have that I don't have, but for my classroom, we have the decodable readers you see there, they're level. We have informational texts, which sort of offers, you know, real world stuff, real information about what you're seeing, real pictures, which is really cool. They get to turn the pages of a story, which is sort of outdated of points, you know, having a real book and having them see that and turn it, and it all ties together so wonderfully. It just makes sense for them. Makes sense for me as a teacher to sort of put this in, and, you know, they keep right along with me. One of the things I like the most is the audio files that I have, I don't know if other grades do, I don't think so, but the audio files that we do in kindergarten, they're listening to something, and they're looking at a workbook page. So it's not this animated, this movie, this cartoon, they actually really have to listen, and that's really, really hard for them to do at this level, but we have it with every unit, and it's my favorite, my favorite lessons of the unit, because they really have to hear and understand and comprehend and put it to work, and it's just, it's something that I think we, as a 5- to 6-year-old group, need to really practice. So again, I'm sorry if I repeated things and took some things away from you, but I think the positive stuff should be repeated, and I think that this program has been working really well in kindergarten. I see a lot of great pieces as we're now, more than happy for the year, and excited for the future, so, yes.
I've got kindergarten in the attic, and it says, "The flat hat is odd, it has a tassel." Is this something that a kindergartner should...
Those are decodable word readers, yeah. They can attack those, they can decode those words, they can blend them together. Some obviously are a little bit more fluent with their reading at this point, but those are all the sounds that we have been introduced to so far in the year. So they have, whether they can read it fluently or not, they can decode it, so they can sound it out and blend the word together.
So they should be able to read, phonetically read the, by the beginning of the, or by the end of the year?
By the end of the year, we should be able to read all of the letters, all of the sounds. At this point, we know 16, because the way it's introduced, each unit introduces a letter, and we've only learned 16 letters, so those decodables go right along with what we know, and they're held accountable for what they've been taught. So if they have been taught the O and the D for odd, so they should be able to be responsible for reading the word odd. If they can't fluently look at it and read it whole word, they can tap it out, "ond." So those are all things that they, again, it ties them nice together, so those decodable readers go along with where we're at. The informational texts are similar too, where they are introducing or showing the skills that they should know, so...
Does a kindergartner know what the word "tassel" means?
We talk about it. That's, again, with the vocabulary. The, in front of that book, I think, has words in the story, I think that was, yeah, one of them.
Oh, yeah, I see.
So those are the words that we talk about, so if they are unknown words, we talk about the words in the story on that page, we talk about what it means. If they don't know what it is, we put meaning to it, and then they see it in the story, which sort of just adds to that vocabulary piece, which is so important.
Yeah, vocabulary is a significant predictor of future academic outcomes, and you want the average kindergartner to come into the vocabulary of about 5,000 words, but many come in with far less, and so building that vocabulary base in kindergarten and preschool even for us is really important.
How do you, excuse me, how do you figure out where a kid is to start on this program, and then how do you measure their progress along the way? Thirdly, relatedly, how does, do you have, is it typically one teacher that's following the child through the three-year program, or is there a handoff of them, like, okay, this is where they're at, you take it the next year?
So we sort of have our own school way of relaying information from one grade to the next level. Obviously, we talk a lot informally, formally, to sort of see, you know, here, this is the kid that I know a lot of, this is, you know, I don't wanna say this is what you're gonna see, cause things change, and, you know, whatnot. The program does have, end of the units, in every two or three for myself in kindergarten, every two units, there's an assessment, which sort of just asks or knows what the kid has known or learned or not learned, and through that I...
Do you do the online one?
I do the paper, yeah. I do the paper, just I sit down with the kid, sometimes as small groups, sometimes individually, and it really just, do they know the letter? Can they recognize the sound that that letter makes? Now, we're getting into more of the reading, so they're reading the sentence, and they're reading to comprehend. So sitting down with a one-on-one kid to see where they're at gets a lot of information, and that's how I do my centers. So we'll sort of base our centers around how those assessments are coming out. And at the beginning, it's all new, so I'm trying to keep up with everything, and then at the end of every two units, there was an assessment, so I was like, oh my goodness, I have to do all this, but it gives such important information, and sometimes I see something that stands out that I didn't recognize, just through observation, through my small group work, those types of things. So I think that checking it for myself too is just as important as with the kids, and then again, handing that to the next grade level, we have our own little...
There's a little 30...
Yeah, yeah.
Give them the microphone, sorry. We have assessments that are just school-wide, that aren't included in Super Kids, and then Super Kids has its own component for assessing. I know in 2nd grade, I think the 2nd grade one, after every unit, there is an assessment and a test, things like decodable words, grammar, and we have a spelling test every week too, and it also does reading comprehension. So that's every, probably, every two weeks, we do one, and there's a score, and there's also writing rubrics, and those scores and things will be passed on to the next year's teacher, so, yeah, it's pretty comprehensive. And the school-wide pieces are those things we talked about when Amy was here with us a couple months ago. So the dibbles that we do for all of our primary students, the aims web assessments that we do, and again, those, the level of those progresses as students get a little bit older. Dibbles is very limited when they first start kindergarten. We're looking just to see, do they recognize letters? Do they know some of those beginning sounds? And again, as they get older, our expectations for what they're supposed to know increase.
Is there, Chris mentioned that there's an online part of this. For parents who might wanna get involved, is there an ability to do so?
I, I'd say that parents love it. Almost every parent at parent conferences, at every other meeting I've had, love it. They come home, and I know my kids with the Super Kids, we've really learned who they are as individuals. They, my kids have asked if they're real before, like, they do consider them friends. I did say yes, so if they ask you, just say yes, but it, you know, they really develop, they really make the Super Kid a person, and then that person teaches us this letter and the sound, and they go along with this, the clubhouse, you know, there's so many titans. And I do have an online parent portal, which I did try to promote as much as I can. At the beginning of the year, I put it in every newsletter, I send home, and make sure you're checking out the portal. And at the beginning, for kindergarten, it was kind of hard, because there was really only one story, you know, there wasn't really too much on there, but I have stressed it so much, you know, just get it up there, so your kid can talk to you about it, ask them questions about this. Now, at this point in the year, there are games, there are leveled stories, there, the informational text is up there, the same exact one that we do in class, you can look at at home. So it's, definitely should be utilized, trying to get more parents to get to it, but it's such an important even conversation starter to have, especially 5-year-olds have a hard time explaining what we're doing, showing, sharing, remembering anything that happened other than recess, really. So having that, they're seeing what we're doing in class, and they can take that home, and that's just such an important reinforcer for them.
These look like they're intended to go home with the children?
Those they at school, but those are online.
These are the ones that are online?
Yep.
My daughters are, they went home. Because we didn't have online.
Do boys and girls tend to read well at vocabulary?
This, honestly, this program, at times, I'll be honest too, has kind of shocked me, because I've done kindergarten now for five years or so, and I look at a lesson, I'm like, oh my goodness, this is what they're expecting, this is the vocabulary they're using, these are the sounds that they're asking us to decode, but they do it, they really do, and I think it's just such a comprehensive program where there's so many pieces, and it just all ties in so nicely, you know, and they really care about it, so I think that's also a big motivating factor.
I guess my question was, do boys and girls generally compete evenly on their ability to read?
In general, we have, we have lots of different kinds of readers and learners, yeah, but they've all picked up this program really well, they've all done well in their own right, they've all sort of picked a favorite Super Kid for whatever reason and whatnot, but yeah, generally.
I've always felt like you guys were at an advantage.
That's a part of mine when I was...
Good, continue the motivation. We can hold off on questions till after, that way they can all finish. All right.
But it's a great question, and so what I was gonna share was some pieces from what we were using, just to kind of illustrate.
And Catherine, what grade do you teach, again?
2nd, 2nd grade, so I'm the last year. And another thing about Super Kids too is, I don't know what you know already about it, but it was created by the inventors of the American Girl Dolls, which seems like a girl thing, but I think that's important to know, because the whole kind of premise behind it is teaching kindness and teaching kind of real-life situations that kids would have in their own lives, and they incorporate a lot of that in the books, which I think is really motivating for kids. So this is, these are some of the old readers we used with our old program, so these are called decodable readers, where the sole purpose is for them to just decode the words. There's not a whole lot of meat and potatoes in these books. The illustrations are kind of bare bones, and there's not a lot of story going on here, so they weren't very motivating for kids at all. So this is the old stuff we used.
And how old do you think this is?
It's got a little...
About 10 years, 3 and a half.
Yeah, and you know, they were quick reads, they were just to make sure the kids knew how to decode those words. So this is what the Super Kids uses instead of that, and by the way, I did not care for those very much. The kids didn't care for them either.
For these?
They were really boring, and they don't make sense. The stories don't make sense. If you read one of those, you have no idea what's going on in the story, you can't, it's all just decoding, you can't make a story out of it.
Pearson knows the world of education, so it's hard to not buy from Pearson.
Oh, yeah, right. So these are the, what they call the decodables for the Super Kids, if you guys can share this. So the reason I brought this is because this is what my students love the most about this program, believe it or not. Out of all the cool magazines we do and the cool, you know, slides and videos we show, they love these decodables. They're really engaging, even just looking at them, the pictures are engaging. It's like a giant chapter book. All the stories in the reader relate to each other, so it's not like those black and white ones where you read one, and the next story's about something totally different. But what they love about this book the most is that they, the stories are about things that the kids go through themselves. So things like starting a new class, meeting a new teacher, learning how to share in the class, working on a school project and picking a partner, and having your partner bail on you, and being really upset about it, and they're so invested in these stories. Every day, every week, or every day we read them, they wanna read the next chapter, and I won't let them, because it's not like we're gonna read those tomorrow, but they are predictable decodable texts that they can read with vocabulary incorporated into them as well, so, but they love these. And the difference between the two books is apparent, obviously. The other things you I wanted to talk about with the program, and I didn't bring anything to show this, but they have this thing every week in 2nd grade called, what are they called? The lasting lesson. And it's basically a time where the whole class sits down in a circle, we kind of sit down together, I'm the leader of the discussion, then there's a topic every week, and there are topics like how to act quickly on something, like if you spill something, how to act quickly, how to be respectful to other people, just kind of life lessons that we take for granted that kids already kind of know, where, you know, it just gives us a chance to really talk to kids on their level, one-on-one, about important social issues and kindness, which is kind of a big theme right now, and an important one, and they love it, and it's a really great opportunity to have this discussion, so. And to practice the oral language skills that we don't always have the opportunity to practice in depth, right, providing your reason and backing it up with your rationale for why this is important. And again, we do that in writing, but doing it orally is equally important, and you know... Brian's gonna talk soon, but we know that as kids get older and are looking for internships and job experiences, those oral skills are very important.
Nice time.
Did you wanna add anything?
Sure, yeah. Well, Amy, both of us, and Catherine, said a lot of things that I am also going to say as well. I brought some materials to show you that are similar to what they asked out. This is my book. This is our handwriting component, and I brought a lot of nonfiction text for you guys to see, which I did not have as much of in the program that we did prior to this. And I'm just gonna fold this up to show. I am so passionate about the materials that we have in the classroom. I felt like what we had before, you know, I had what I needed, but I was grabbing here and there, trying to find things for different levels, and everything is right here for us, so we can concentrate more on quality teaching than looking for different materials that will work. The texts are beautiful, as you can see inside, like Catherine also said, they're our story words, like you're asking about in soundovers. They are very invested, they, whether it's about a Super Kid, like one of their friends or themselves. The kids in my class love the nonfiction texts, and they can really relate to a lot of the things that they're seeing. These are the super duper books, and these are like magazines, so they're very invested in these as well, there are story words in the back. And one of my favorite parts of the program is the parent portal, which Catherine touched on a little bit. Any of the books that we've used in the classroom, they have access to it. I have a teacher portal, and I can save where, let's say on unit 8 we're on right now, I can adjust it so the parents can read with their child on their computer or tablet at home, the story that we read in the class that day. So I've had parents, I, right now, I'm so excited, because I have, probably 90% of my class is using a parent portal at home now, whereas the beginning of the year, it wasn't that high, but we talk about it so much, and they get so invested in the class, they wanna go home and tell their parents about it. There are songs that they like to sing with the parents, and all the songs are about the Super Kids, their names all... Their names all, you know, might be associated with a short vowel or rhyming. There's a character named Etta Vetta whose name rhymes and we talk all about that and about names in our class that rhyme. And they just love it. There's a handwriting component and I passed around, um, the board that we use in our classroom. And just the routine that we have in the classroom, they love the routine. Like we start our day, um, doing spelling words and we do handwriting. And all of this is a really great way for informal assessment in the classroom. So every day I'm doing, assessing their handwriting or whatever skill they're learning, um, you know, phonetic skill, by seeing what they're writing on the handwriting boards. And then we also have end of the unit assessments, like Catherine and Melissa were talking about. Me, you, news, two weeks, so we do that every two weeks, we have another assessment.
What grade do you teach in?
I teach first grade.
So kindergarten, first?
Right.
I forgot too, to answer your question about the boy-girl thing, that was my whole point I got it. Um, so in these books, um, the topics are for both. If you kind of look through, you know, and I'm being, um, kind of gender biased here, but you know, there are stories about soccer and your team. And then there are stories about, you know, your friend being mean to you. So it touches on, I think, both are all kind of experiences that they all have in school.
Do you have any other questions? Oh, we love it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just so refreshing to have these current, like just great materials at your fingertips. I.
Well, I think that's a good point. When we're, when teachers are enthusiastic, the students are enthusiastic about learning too. It really does make a difference.
These super duper magazines, they can't, I have one little boy that just can't wait to the next unit. There was one about, I think you guys have it right now, about Aunt Cars.
Race car.
And at the first week, I spread them all out and said, we are going to look at all these cool magazines. And he, every day, every week, when are we going to read the motorcycle one? When are we going to get to that unit? I mean, it's, it's just really cool to see.
And I liked how I saw in the book, it tied into the magazine. So there is, you mentioned that tie-in. I, as a parent, I could see the tie-in.
Did you mention that the characters start kindergarten and they grow up?
Oh, I didn't realize.
So the same characters in kindergarten and first grade and second, they're the same kids, same class, they just grow up over this.
They are those super kids.
But they get really invested.
They're super kids, they're very good people, they have personalities, they have the trust, likes to likes, all those things that they have. They can connect to them.
And as a board, we can remember two years ago, we had parents in here asking for more on the computer, for them to be able to get involved. And this is, if we can start this now, again with the curriculum and the assistant superintendent, we can follow through with this. And maybe by the time they get in high school, everybody will be on Google classrooms. Because that's what we were, that's what parents were wanting. They wanted more to know what was happening with the curriculum, to know what they were going to be looking at and what they had to study. Thank you so much.
I noticed, I noticed that these are like, uh, two thousand seventeen copyright date, so they really are brand new. Uh, what's the, the cycle for?
Well, the last cycle was ten years. So we hope that we are more on a five-year plan, honestly. I mean, that's, that's really what year you want to be. You hit sort of a core content area each year ideally, and then you have a year for those other areas that.
Right, yep.
You need to be close to it, so that's the ideal.
So this, this is, and it's just been published in two thousand seventeen, we're hitting it right as it's, it's coming out.
Can we always recall the materials to just kind of make up that?
What is, what, what of these, and I'm assuming it's the workbook and I don't have that in hand anymore. Are those the only consumables that have to be replaced yearly?
We have writing journal, um, the first writing paper, the workbook. They have a home component, they call the backpack pages, which you can send home nightly. Um, I usually put together some in a packet so that they can pick when, their families can pick when they're going to do them. Um, but they love them and that would be a consumable as well.
Are those?
Yeah.
But the workbooks would have to be replaced at, every year. Uh, and those, uh, work, those backpack packages, are those by, um, master and you copy them? Or are they all things that you get a bundle of?
There's a master that you can copy, it is a reproducible, so you can.
We have what books now, but you can.
If it's reproducible, you can copy that. So it's basically just a workbook.
Right.
And the paper.
And the magazines, called magazines, but they're really a paper, basically a paperback book?
I've sent them home to them to borrow, but they come back because they know they're going to get it.
They're not something that's going to come, they're, we're not having to subscribe annually for that.
Yeah, and they have articles that are, they don't require, it's not like current event kind of articles, so they're not going to be outdated. But they're nonfiction, I'm interested.
This is a program from kindergarten to second grade.
Right.
Yes.
And then my other question is, we would be purchasing what, pre K through six, so that we'd have, uh, the before level? If some of the kindergartners were struggling and we'd have the sixth grade level for our fifth graders to go into?
So this is through second grade. There are some extensions for some other components that run into third grade. It doesn't really stretch much beyond that in and of itself. Um, but, but these really are the core components of the reading piece. So they should have, to get through all of this, they should have mastered the phonetic pieces that they need to be able to move on, to learn, to read as.
Okay.
Fully, uh, ready to use reading for learning and gathering information. We're still obviously evolving as readers, but this program itself is really focused on that early phonetic base. I mean, that awareness, vocabulary.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And what are we going to do with all these? Donate?
He's a Miss Munch.
Yeah. What a color, right? So we could just move on to Ryan LaBassar. And Ryan's here to talk about our extended, extended learning opportunities.
Thank you very much for looking at that. It's a great opportunity. And, uh, I'm Ryan LaBassar, I'm the transition coordinator at the high school. So what are extended learning opportunities? I've got a presentation back there if you want. Uh, extended learning opportunities are, they're basically any experience that happens outside of the classroom. Learning experience that happens outside of the classroom. It's basically to provide an educational experience that's meaningful and relevant, um, by meeting the students' individual learning styles, their needs, their interests, their talents. They're student-driven, okay? They're based on student interests and they take place, they can take place during the school day or outside of school hours. So they're, they're flexible. We have a number of different ELOs available here. Here, that's a lot smaller than it looked in my computer. But there are six, there are service aids, um, you can complete independent coursework, uh, career exploration, uh, advanced study, uh, internships and project-based learning. And, um, most of ours right now are our career exploration. Actually, the, the five students that are currently participating in ELOs, um, the first, the first three of these will be career exploration. So this student, uh, is interested in pursuing a career in accounting. Uh, she's currently, um, on-site at Chinburg Properties. Uh, she spends two, two to three days a week there during the last block of the day, um, working on these skills that she's, she's determined in advance. So we sat down with the, uh, the human resources and accounting manager at Chinburg and discussed what she would be doing, what she would be, what she would be learning onsite and developed a plan for her. Her final, uh, project for the ELO will be a how-to guide for future, um, accounting administrators. Uh, it is a paid internship, which is, which is a nice bonus. She's, um, she's going at the last period of the day and working into the afternoon, but does have this focus time one-on-one with the accounting manager. The next one, uh, is, is a floral design internship at Flora Ventures. Uh, this, this student goes during her C block, so it's a two-hour block in the middle of the day. Uh, and she's learning the floral design aspect, but also, um, entrepreneurship, running a small business. As you know, running your own small business is a risky venture. So knowing the ins and outs, getting an opportunity to know the ins and outs at this stage in their lives, I think, is, is really important before they, they move on and make decisions about post-secondary education. This is also a paid internship. The third career exploration, uh, ELO is at Seacoast Machine Shop. A student is interested in learning, uh, more about computer-assisted design, uh, machining. In, in discussing with Steve what the, um, competencies would be, he wanted to see the student be, um, to develop his time management skills and be more efficient in completing tasks. Um, well, you can, you can do that right there. How to, how to order materials and, and accurately quote a job, those kinds of things, so. Uh, his final product is going to be a portfolio, kind of just demonstrating his ability to meet those competencies. Uh, the next one, I'm going to try not to get too excited. Sorry. As a musician myself, this one's particularly interesting. Uh, Jamie Ray, our, our, our music teacher, band director, um, had a student who, uh, excels on, on his instrument in class, but also is an exceptional guitarist and arranger, music writer. So we went through the composition competencies and came up with four that he would be meeting. Uh, he's basically, he's arranging a piece for the band to play at the spring concert in May. Um, so that'll be his final product, is a performance of this piece that he's composed, uh, which is pretty exciting. The last one, uh, is for service aid. Kind of, service aid is, is, uh, any student that's going or interested in working with, uh, with students, working with, with children. This student goes to the elementary school art room, uh, two to three days a week to assist Ms. LaBranch. They're, these are less, um, I don't want to say less demanding, but it's, it's one of the more flexible, um, ELOs we have. Uh, we're focusing on attendance and punctuality, uh, attitude, their work initiative, their work habits. Um, and they reflect, he'll reflect on, on the experience as well. All of these ELOs have a, a reflection piece. So weekly they're writing journal entries that I'm reviewing, um, that this, and they're fun to read. They're really fun to read because they're, you're, you're seeing them go into an experience, um, and setting goals for themselves and realizing that maybe they've set goals that are, yeah, you know. Right, that the, uh, the goal might be above where they can, they can reach. And making those adjustments to ensure that they're still, they're still meeting the competency, but in a way that's, that's more manageable. So those are all more long-term experiences, they go quarter-long, semester-long, year-long. Uh, in addition to those, students participate in job shadows and, and, um, informational interviews with area professionals to learn more about careers. They're sort of the precursor to, um, a job shadow would be the precursor to an internship. Uh, an informational interview would be the precursor to a job shadow, those kinds of things, so. Um, there's a number of community partners, that's what I could fit, uh, on the second half of this slide to make it nice and neat. But, uh, there, there are a number of, of, uh, community partners that have been involved the last couple of years. So as we're moving towards competency-based learning, this is where, um, ELOs provide a flexibility that I think would be really beneficial to our kids, especially when they're coming, uh, when they know what competencies they want to meet and want to find out a way that works for them to meet them. Because we're shifting from time to more of a competency-based approach. Any questions?
Uh, for those students who are also enrolled at the SST, uh, do you do the coordination for their, uh, their extended learning experiences that work with those, those skills that they're gaining there? Or is that all managed by the SST?
It usually goes through SST. We have one right now that is, um, they're, the SST teacher is, is coordinating it. We have the paperwork for it, but it's more going through SST.
So, um, those are, those are five students that are participating, are the more?
I'm sorry?
Are the more than those five that participate?
Um, yes. Um, one thing I failed to mention in the slide is we have, because ELOs are for all students of all abilities, we have a number of students that are out, um, developing job skills that they're going to need to be as independent as possible when they leave high school. So we have students, um, at the, at the thrift store Newmarket developing retail skills and Abashon Hardware, developing skills they're going to need to be successful post-secondary as well.
So if, oh, so how many students would be involved in outside activities where they were working with an organization such as Abashon or the police department? What's the, the total population?
Total right now, um, would be ten, including the student from SST.
Would you expect that this program would exponentially grow?
Absolutely, yeah.
That's the?
That's the goal, yeah. I have five of these ELOs, the, the three that are, um, career exploration, um, I'd love to see twice as many next year. And I, I really think that's, that's possible. And as, as teachers become more invested in the process, um.
And as parents learn about it.
Yes.
Which is why, part, part of the reason Ryan's here, right? We're moving into that course selection time period at the junior high. We wanted to highlight this now because kids have the opportunity to pursue things that they're passionate about.
And I communicate pretty frequently with Justin, um, our guidance, our guidance counselor, um, just to promote. If a student has a, if a student has an interest and there isn't an elective that's necessarily meeting their interests, let's create something.
Or to learn about it.
Yeah.
So my, one of my children actually did this. Ryan, I had no idea about this and Ryan, all of a sudden I started getting emails. So I had to find out who this guy was. And my son actually had a job and they, he will have a job this summer all through this program, which I so appreciate.
It's, it's, it's pretty exciting.
It's kind of like cooperative ed at Northeastern, right? I mean, this is kind of that.
Okay.
Kind of that concept?
I'm not familiar.
Somewhat?
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't all have to be, it doesn't all have to be business-focused, right? It could be that I have a real passion for dance and I dance regularly outside of my school life, but I'd like to use that for an elective phys ed or fine arts credit. Um, and so those possibilities exist as well. Or an academic piece as an alternative way to demonstrate math competencies or English competencies or language competencies as we move forward.
So do these have to at some point, um, overlap with the school day? Or is it additional credits if somebody like the dancer you're describing is dancing however many days a week outside of the school day, they write it up and set up the program and then they can get additional credits towards graduation?
There's, there's one we're working on this summer, a student who's interested in landscaping and that's, that's the path he wants to go on. Wants to go down after school. So I've talked to him about finding employment and once he finds employment, connecting me with, um, the owner so that we can talk about ways that he can get some elective credit, um, working in landscaping over the summer, so.
Right, which could be horticulture and sciences related. It could be marketing or the business aspect. It's going to depend on that individual student and the experience that they're having. And we can look at how it aligns with different competencies in different areas.
And it, that's what I love about it, when you tie it all into the competency-based learning. We, you know, we all think we want our kids to go to college. We might want our kids to start looking at plumbing, electrician, construction. These are all things that, hey, look at, you know, mortuaries. These are all things that we all need and we're seeing it as a, almost a dying art.
Well, that skills gap in the trades, yeah. I mean, these, um, these companies want to get these kids sooner.
And this is how old I am, but in Al, you too, this is what you used to do. You'd get an internship with an electrician and, and we stopped doing that. And I, this, if we could stop bringing this back, our kids could have employment and not debt.
It's a total aside, but my wife and I are very involved with the food bank. And it would be really interesting to have kids go down there and see what that is all about.
Mm-hmm.
Not as, not as a educational, but it's, it's an experience, um, just outside to get.
The hard part is, Al, sometimes you'll see families in there that they didn't know. That, that kind of thing, but I get what you're saying, yeah.
Or the senior center where.
Yes.
Yeah.
Where elderly people would, yeah.
Some of our students do spend time at the senior center, um, arranging the rooms after events. Some of our students do spend time at the senior center, arranging rooms after events.
And cleaning.
And cleaning, and that's, that's more of a, you know, following directions. It's, it's a different level of skill, it's a different skill they're working on, but it's, it's something they could translate or generalize into the real world.
But if they were, if somebody worked with them, they could be working towards something in geriatrics, geriatric medicine, social work. There are all sorts of skills there, that, that experience is wonderful for them.
Because you work at all different levels. You work with kids that are college-bound, you work with kids that might be living in a group home, or...
Half of my job is, yeah, special ed, so.
Brian, I know you have a couple of different events that you're also connected with that are coming up. Can you speak just briefly to what those are?
On March twenty-fourth, Saturday, March twenty-fourth, from ten to two, I'm working with Exeter, Epping, and Raymond to put on a transition fair for families and individuals with disabilities. So, yeah, so it's, it's tying together all the different services they would be looking at post-secondary.
And where's that going to be?
It's at Exeter High School. There's going to be, there'll be vendors there, and the, the main speaker is Dan, Dan Habee from the Institute of Disability, he's gonna show one of his documentaries, so families can see that, see what the possibilities are for their students once they leave. In addition to the vendors, we have nine different speakers, so families will be going into different rooms to hear people talk about their experiences.
Will you email that to me?
Yes.
Thank you. Email to Meredith.
On April twentieth, it's the Friday before April break, we're gonna have a career day. It's more of a career cluster day at this point. So, we'll, we'll have speakers first thing in the morning from seven forty-five to eight thirty. Students will go into their advisory before moving on to speak, hear different presenters speak. So we won't be doing it in, in the gym as a, as a, a big central event. Students are going to pre-select speakers based on their interests. And then they'll be assigned to those rooms.
Will be like a first come, first served, so seniors will get first.
Now, we won't necessarily hit every career interest. Because it, it might make for some really small, small...
But as people learn about it, too.
Right, that's, that's kinda the point, the career cluster. So if a student wants to be a doctor, we'll, we'll have some folks from Lambrey there that can speak to that, but they'll, they'll be able to discuss other possibilities in that career field as well. I think that'll be really exciting.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be good, too.
This seems, this seems like a great program, and also seems like a great opportunity for some, maybe, folks in the community who've had diverse experiences.
That's so new, I didn't even know.
To, to, you know, I, I mean, a lot of folks, I think, retired folks or whatever, love to share what they've done.
Yes, yeah. After, after the event, we're gonna host a small luncheon, if I could say that right. A small luncheon for, for, for presenters, and, and for other area business leaders, to learn more about extended learning opportunities themselves, and how that, that connection can be made.
And the purpose of that is what?
The purpose of that would be...
Broaden our network of extended learning opportunities for students.
Gotcha. So, so you'll invite people that perhaps might not be aware of...
Right.
You've got quite a list there, I mean, you've got an impressive list of businesses and stuff.
I, I wanna bring ELO coordinators from other, other districts and the business leaders they work with in to speak as well, so that we can see how, so that they can see how a successful program runs. And, and those are the people I've been connecting, because I don't work in a vacuum. I, I mean, I am alone in my office a lot. But I do have an opportunity through the Extended Learning Opportunities Network to meet with other professionals that do this, and the, and the transition community of partners. They meet, they meet once a month, and getting to hear what other people are doing is really, really inspiring.
Are you involved with the Newmarket Business Association?
I have been in the past, yes, yeah.
And we met with them just this morning.
We met with Brendan this morning.
That list is also, I've noticed, the business association list is huge now.
It's over a hundred members, yeah.
Yeah, it's huge.
Just, if you think of the businesses in the mill, and the opportunities that we have.
Sure. And it's, and it's not necessarily specific to what that business does, too. If you look at some of the bigger manufacturers in town, I mean, they, they have human resources departments, they have accounting departments, they have other departments that would be of interest to students, yeah.
Covering couches. So there's two women that work in the mill that just cover furniture. Holstering, and, yeah, and they makes, listen, they're making bank.
The bike.
You know, in the, in the, everything, just, right in our little tiny town. Perfect.
There's a lot going on here.
Any other questions?
So I would just add that we have Ryan coming back, hopefully with some of these students at the end of the, at the end of the year, to, to kind of report out on what their experiences have been, because again, we wanna kind of amplify the opportunities that are available, but also continue to learn how we can improve upon the opportunity.
Because the goal is to get them, them to come to me, yeah, to, to develop those.
And the other nice thing is we can say to our friends who's on the SST board, because we do need electricians, we do need plumbing, we, this might be a great way to start those programs up over yonder.
And while it's difficult to get high school students into, into those as internships, construction companies would hire certain students to work as laborers, and they would have access to all those, all those trades.
We have a construction project coming up.
Yeah, we've got a little one down the street coming up.
I've heard.
For our school board members, I did forward to Kim, Margaret from SST has a whole list of the work site tours for the counselors, might be interesting to her.
I've, I've been on, yeah.
And for, for school board members to attend, so you can see all the various work sites.
We went to the auto, auto...
Right, we went to the auto one together, and just this week I was at HVAC Corp, and then toured the Rockingham Nursing Home and the renovation project they're doing there.
I was in the cooking class today over there, so. There you go.
Thank you all very much for your time, appreciate it.
Bye, thank you, Ryan. All right, I'm in charge, aren't I? Sorry. All right, so we could...
Maybe jump back up?
Jump back up and have the superintendent report, and then, any, any reports?
So, lest I forget, the town and school reports are available. They're available in our office and the town clerk's office, so if you are looking to get yours early, they are hot off the press.
Also out at the library, I picked mine up there today.
Out at the library, that's right, thank you. Let's see, I would like to just acknowledge a couple of donations. We received a three hundred dollar donation from the, from a family to be put towards our robotics team for the purchase of materials. We received a donation of a karaoke machine from a sixth-grade student to use for student activities. And we are anticipating the imminent receipt of some office and waiting rooms furniture being donated by Wood Stanley Enterprises. So, we appreciate those, those are all below the threshold where you have to adopt them, but we did want to acknowledge them here. Gosh, I got a whole list of things, so I'll try to remember the pictures first. We received our asbestos inspection final report, so that was completed, and we met all requirements. We were found being compliant with the HARA regulations, so we are happy that all of those things remain in place and put us in a, a good place as we move forward into the construction project. Also in your packet, just pointing out that we had a report on indicator eleven, which is a special ed indicator on timeliness of initial evaluation. So, are we completing our evaluations within the timelines designated by law? And the answer is yes, we were a hundred percent compliant with that, again, during this year, as we had been for the prior three years. We got, I think, the third or fourth letter from the state, one from the governor this time again, and one from the commissioner, saying that our security improvements, infrastructure grants have been now finalized and approved at both buildings. So, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty cents, plus a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and forty cents. So, again, we will be utilizing those funds sort of now, but as well in coordination as we move forward with the construction project, to address those additional security pieces that were identified. Just a quick update on impact fees, we currently have a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-four cents available, that needs to be spent down by June of 2021. Again, we talked about those costs being available potentially to help toward some of the construction addition renovation costs. Just wanna call people's attention to legislation that is still out there, so, a House bill's still out there, Senate Bill one ninety-three on the Freedom Savings Account, so that remains in Finance Committee right now.
That's the voucher bill, correct?
Some people call it the voucher bill, yes. And so that is available for students between the ages of five and twenty, but you can find the text of that bill online. The financial implications for communities could be significant, and so that, that's the piece that I, I would encourage people to pay attention to.
And can I go, I'm gonna go on a tangent right now, because if you are watching this, then obviously you care enough about this, that you need to learn about that bill and the bills that are coming down. And we need to start having our government know that we're paying attention, that's my tangent. Go ahead.
Thank you. Let's see, working down my list, I, I just, we would be remiss, I think, not to mention the events that occurred in Florida last week, that certainly, I think, touched our, the nation's hearts, but also locally. I know I heard from a number of staff and parents and some students just about their own concerns and anxiety, and kind of debriefing and processing all of that. Couple of things that have come up since, one was a question about, gee, should we be doing, you know, drills right away? Should we hold off? And, and to some extent, we, we have held off, out of sort of an abundance of sensitivity, and I think that, that's been the right thing to do. But, but the right thing to do also is to move forward and continue to practice those safety pieces that we have in place, fire drills, lockdown drills, those routine things that we do to help keep our students safe in the event that there is an emergency. So we are gonna be returning to those schedules, and we will be conducting those drills, and we just wanna make people aware that that's part of our normal process, those are things we do every year. We do ten fire drills, we do a few lockdowns every year, and we will be doing those again, so.
And unfortunately, it's part of our children's lives.
And it, and it has been, I mean, for, for most of them since they've been in school. Columbine was nearly twenty years ago, it's been, you know, for many of our teachers, it's been their entire career. But when events like this happen, it's, it's still impacts us really significantly, and, and causes us to look at things in a new way, and that's, again, that's part of our process. That's how we, how we keep our schools safe, as safe as we can, is to pay attention and be alert, and look at things differently, and continue to look at our plans. Another question that was posed to me this week is what happens if our students decide to walk out next week? That's a conversation I've had with our administrators, and Catherine and I discussed it briefly before. I've not yet heard from students about that. I have had experiences with these kinds of things before, and typically, we would encourage student leaders to kind of reach out to administration, sit down, and sort of talk through what those plans are. If students are participating in a planned activity and participating respectfully and responsibly, I, I can't envision that there would be sanctions for that. On the other hand, if students kind of abuse that opportunity by, you know, leaving school grounds without permission to go get food from, you know, McDonald's...
Not McDonald's, well, you know. Not anymore.
Or, or were, you know, you know, using profane language in the middle of the street. Those are things that, that would have disciplinary consequences, but, you know, America is a country that's been founded on democracy and protest, and, and I think our students, you know, should, should have the opportunity to learn to use those skills responsibly, so.
Is there a, maybe we could send letters home to parents, so parents could have that conversation? With, if this is something that has, is being discussed, and...
Well, I, I think Catherine, as our student representative, is, is in conversation with other students, and I, I think that's, that's a conversation that students, I don't know if there's a student, probably not tomorrow, because it will be vacation, but probably, yeah. But, but probably after we come back from the break, that's an opportunity for, to kind of revisit those conversations. And I know our, our high school administrators are aware, very aware of these possibilities, and engage with students, engage with students. Yeah, oh, yes. I think a lot of parents are already having conversations that schools are having with the students as well, making students aware of everything that's going on, and how they can play a role in that, and how they can be a force and a change for betterment and safer environments in the school in the future.
Well said. Let's see, we had our first cooking class for our parents tonight, and Chris, is there anything you wanna say about that? Since you're here?
Did I, did I ever show up? So first, the three series that we're doing, it's kind of a community outreach. The funding was supported through NCEP, so, again, the community stepped up to help out with that. Jared Woodman, owner and, and local chef of Panzanuelas, was our first chef, and he made beef stew. And the parents got to eat, while he did the presentation, they all left with a bag of materials, a built-up recipe, and couldn't be more happy and asked when they could sign up again. So, I told them they have to wait, because we can accommodate about ten to sixteen people in our culinary arts lab with the, with the renovations coming. Should be able to, to make that happen with, with more people, but very well attended, and we'll do another one in March, which is cookie, Cooking with Your Kids, so actually learning how to cook with your kids. And then the one in April will be done through Linda Hoppy and Jen Jones in our own district, and they're gonna do healthy cooking, and an alternative to burritos, making it very healthy and, and health-conscious. So, it's, it was really neat, and it was great to see, and the community really loved coming into our school and having adult classes in there. So, I think it's something that, when Jared did, he goes, I gotta do this more often, I gotta get here with the kids. So again, talking with Ryan, that connection with the community, what a better ELO than having our local chef come in and work with our, with our cuisine class. So, it, it got a lot of balls running, and, and it was a really neat idea that came up at the beginning of the year when Meredith, Linda and I sat down and talked, and to see it come to fruition tonight was, was fabulous. So I was, I was really proud of the community, and what Jared put on was amazing, so.
Yeah, and if you're, if you're hungry tomorrow, stop by, because there may be some beef stew available upstairs.
For us, please come by tomorrow, because we've got some upstairs, so.
Get here early, come early, it won't last long.
With that girl, I'd say seven thirty.
Let's see, I went last week with Erica McNeil, our Director of Special Education, to visit the Literacy Center at UNH, talking with them about some creative ways we might be able to partner around literacy, working with students that they do some training for, to potentially come and work with us in after-school times, to help out in our homework program, to potentially do some kind of enrichment modeling lessons after school, potentially some things during the day. So, they're a relatively new entity, and so it's a great opportunity to kind of forge a relationship with them. I think they're very interested in building a connection with Newmarket. We are conveniently located in close proximity to the university. We've got transportation that will bring students right to our door. And, and we've got a, a great, great student population who would be really fun for them to work with. So, I think both, both sides kind of walked away excited about the possibilities, and we're, they've got some grant opportunities that they're looking at moving forward, and so we're gonna see what we can do to kind of leverage some funds and partner with them around literacy in particular, which is also great timing as we move forward with Super Kids. So, that's exciting for us.
And then there's a pool, there's a, a new pool of employees.
That is part one, and we had that conversation as well, about, you know, returning to a more robust internship relationship, which I, I think has sort of dwindled in recent years, but I think there are opportunities to rekindle that, so that's exciting. Ryan was here, he talked a little bit, but we did have a meeting this morning with the Newmarket Business Association representatives around education and extended learning opportunities was part of the focus of that, as was the career piece. But, but again, continuing that conversation about how we can help students engage more with the resources available in our community, but also how we can help let the community know, hey, we can, we can use you here, there are opportunities to make connections with our students, and very positive meeting and great people involved, so thank you to them. We are working on getting a software system up and running for professional development, so that's a tool that we have in place that will kind of streamline that process, probably won't roll out until next year, and may take a little bit of time as we move forward with that rollout. But, right now, we do a lot of that record-keeping on paper and by hand, and again, it's not the best use of everyone's time, you know, we shouldn't have to make a phone call to someone to say, can you pull out my phone? You know, we shouldn't have to make a phone call to someone to say, "Can you pull out my file and see how many hours I have for X, Y, or Z in two thousand and eighteen?" So, moving this forward is, is exciting. There's some backend work, and Chris has been a point person on that and working closely with Penny and the Professional Development Committee. But again, just one more thing that I think will help kind of free us up to spend our time more efficiently on those exciting things, working with kids. And on a related note, we're continuing to look at electronic time cards. We mentioned that when the auditor was here, but that's a piece, again, we hope to be able to move forward with next year. The elementary band concert was just a couple nights ago, so if you have not had the opportunity to hear new musicians play Eau Claire de la Lune or Hot Cross Buns, that was your night, so you're gonna have to wait until next year. But it's so fun also to see how proud and excited they were and the joy that it brought to the music teacher in introducing them and watching their pride. Few little soloists of first and second-year band students, and boy, what a difference from those first-year Hot Cross Buns pieces. Country Walk, I think, was also featured to the second-year students, who are really playing a piece as a band. So, pretty exciting for them as well to kind of sit together for the first time in a concert. Let's, and, you know, just wait.
Yeah.
Until they're a little older. Next week, I'll be at the College Board Regional Forum, so the Academic Assembly is the piece that I get to run next week, which is exciting. So, I'll be working with high school and post-secondary folks from around New England and talking about the SAT and AP exams and some of those pieces, so looking forward to that.
Can you talk a little more about what, I don't know what that means.
So, I was appointed, I don't know, end of last year, beginning of this year, to the College Board Regional Assembly. So, the College Board is the organization that runs the SAT as well as AP process, and there are some other things that fall under that as well. And they are a member-driven organization, so they have representatives from each state. I was the main representative for a couple of years at one point, but now I am representing New England to their National Academic Assembly. So, that's where they talk about refinements to the AP courses, where they talk about the PSAT or SAT exam and some of those changes, where we look at the research around how does that align to success at the college level. So, I will be there next week in my official capacity as the Academic Assembly Representative, working with folks from around New England, so.
An Academic Assembly Representative is what?
So, I collect information from the folks from New England, get their feedback around what's working, where would they like to see improvements, what tools are really useful to them as it relates to the College Board pieces. And, you know, the College Board, I think, has gone from what was perceived to be a very elitist tool and organization that was only about, you know, this very top tier of students, to an organization that has really driven an equity agenda and is really focused on providing opportunity to all kids for future success at a, at a high level. Sure. And I think you already covered my other thing, so that might be it.
I would just ask, I noticed on the music call schedule that the Newmarket concert is scheduled already for sometime in May, and I don't remember the date now.
We just had it up on there.
Um, I don't know if I can get to it quickly. Whoa, oh, that's April, I had to keep going. I know it does not conflict with the school board meeting, but I may have to double-check for you. No, we worked really carefully to make sure that didn't happen this year, but I don't have a date quickly.
I'll, I'll check it out. But just so parents know that it's happening on that.
Yes.
It's a nice, nice venue.
All right, shall we move to the quarterly financial update? So, I have the quarterly update through the end of December, actually, and I also review more recent information to try to build into that forecast. So, right now, I anticipate a surplus of about one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We have a surplus in regular ed and special ed. A lot of that has to do with various changes in health benefit elections and changes in staff. The, there is a deficit in the technology area, because if you recall, we reduced the budget and we planned to use capital reserve. So, I built in the fact that that will be in a deficit position, and we're still in a surplus. So, I, I don't envision that we'll need to tap into that capital reserve, which is the good news come the end of the year, based on these projections right now. I won't go through each line, but if you have any questions on, my notes are on the second page, the explanations for each function. So, that's, yeah, we're in a good financial position. And I didn't bring the revenue, but we're also projecting to be in a good place for revenue, and I'll have that for the next quarterly.
I don't remember what we projected to carry forward for fund balance into the next fiscal year, was it a hundred?
Three, uh, three hundred thousand dollars, yeah.
So, that would be held back, yeah.
All right, so then should we go to the School Board Committee reports?
Sure. Sounds perfect.
Does anybody have anything to report?
I have a couple of items for Building Committee if Mike does not.
Mike doesn't wanna speak.
Go right ahead. So, one, Greg Marles and I and representative from Tie and Bond and from Beta Traffic, folks went to meet with the Department of Transportation, District Six, last week, I guess, beginning of last week, just about the driveway plan. They had some questions, so I would characterize that as a really productive and positive meeting. And we don't yet have final word on that DOT permitting approval. We'll go through their state-level folks, but we, we hope to hear back on that relatively soon. I know those submittals were all in and have been made, and we think we answered their questions. So, they were intending to present to the state-level folks in the very near future, and hopefully we'll get an answer soon. That was really positive. We've had phasing meetings, several of them, about both schools over the last couple of weeks as well. Again, just trying to kind of project forward particularly into summer, which is stepping upon us quickly. We do not, we have not yet finalized bids or reached the guaranteed maximum price, so those things happen kind of immediately after we come back from vacation. So, bids actually, I think, were due, most of them were due this week, the rest of them, there are actually a few, I think, that, that come in next week. But Ekman Construction is, is working to kind of pull that information together, and then on March eighth, there's a joint meeting with the Building Committee and the School Board to look at those pieces and, and work towards reaching that guaranteed maximum price. So, that's a really important next step, because until that happens, those contractors aren't all lined up for us to be able to lay out all of the phasing for this work. So, so we're going with a lot of the assumed dates, and, and again, Ekman does this for a living. Well, I feel pretty confident in their projections, but I, again, I just wanna say it's still a little bit tentative right now. We do know that the junior, senior high school will have no public access throughout the summer. That includes the entire parking lot, as well as the parking lot across the street, and, and we've been in touch with the Recreation Department and Police and Fire, and folks all know that. But I, I just wanna say it publicly, just so there's no confusion or misconception. There is a lot of work that has to happen on that site, and for safety reasons, we really are gonna need to close down that site completely, as well as the site across the street. We, our junior, senior high school office will not be operating out of the junior, senior high this summer. We're still trying to figure out what the best location for them will be. We're also finalizing our summer program plans, and we'll be pinning those down in the month of March as well. But we know that that all will be operating out of the elementary school, and we've worked with first student around that, and again, everybody, everybody's aware of that and operating under those assumptions. But we move our portables this summer. We have site work going on there as well, so there are a lot of moving parts. People will begin to see some ground being turned over in April in the parking lot across from the junior, senior high school, as well as on the McGrath property that abuts the elementary school. But none of the heavy-duty construction will begin on the school lots themselves until school ends in June, and it will be fast and furious really at both buildings after that. Most of the work at the elementary school happens around the rear of the building and, and with some road connections, again, with the exception of, of the modulators being moved, which will happen before summer school even starts. So, there are some very tight timelines, as you might imagine. It's exciting, but people are gonna have to kind of bear with us that there are gonna be some changes. There will be some changes to our traffic patterns at both buildings next year, and we'll communicate those as times get a little closer. Again, we've, I've had a number of conversations with, with Rick Malaski and with Chief Tru and both of our building administrators, and Chris has been involved, and, and we've had our head custodians involved. So, we'll be meeting in either March or April staff meetings, it depended on what worked best for principals, again, just to update staff on what's coming. But there is a lot that's coming up, and we're working on it. We hear you. If something, you know, comes up that you're concerned we haven't thought about, tell us. Does no harm, you know, at the risk of pointing out the obvious, there's no risk to that. Tell us anyway. You know, there are a lot of, of heads working together on this, so we hope that we're not missing anything, but it, it doesn't hurt. If someone has a thought, pass it on.
You know what, how are they gonna do the rec camp? I know that's not our concern, but that...
And, and again, we've worked closely with, with Amy to lay that out, and she's been working with, with, I know, Public Works to kind of think about what that traffic pattern might look like and, and how they make that work. But we will have safety fencing around our perimeter, and, and they're gonna do their best with their traffic flow. But, you know, things like parking next year will be a challenge at the junior, senior high. Students should be preparing themselves now that there will be very few student permits, if any, that we're able to issue, because we just won't have the physical space to do that. So, these are all temporary challenges, but, but again, just wanna remind people that, that this is coming, and it's gonna happen fast when it does.
Could we maybe have a parent meeting? Again, they're always so well-attended, but we could have one, and we can start saying that. Listen, next year, your senior might be, there only might be one senior parking space, and it might go to the valedictorian or ever, like, we, it might be a reward system, which I think it should be anyways, but, you know, you, this is the reality.
Is that a school fundraising idea?
Ooh!
Just kidding. Nope.
Don't do that, no. But it just, you know, this is a reality that we're gonna have to deal with. So, if we start talking about, so we don't have those parents yelling at our administrators on, on Monday, the first day of school.
And so, we will be sending home additional communications. Again, I don't, I don't wanna get too far ahead, because we haven't figured out yet what all of the traffic pattern pieces will be. We still need to hear back from the DOT on some of those pieces, Department of Transportation on some of those pieces, so, so I don't wanna get too far ahead of that. But I, but that is why I, one of the reasons I am saying now out loud in public, and it will be in our newsletters, these things are coming, just be aware that they're coming. We'll keep talking to you about it, and, and if you have concerns or thoughts or questions, reach out to us, because we, we wanna hear them and, and work with you to get the answers you need. I had one more thing.
Meredith, could you remind us once again about the next, about the building committee meeting? When did you say that it was gonna be held?
March eighth.
Same, we have a school board meeting the same night.
Yes, joint meeting, March eighth.
Starting at seven?
Starting at six.
Seven o'clock.
Okay, so six o'clock?
Yes, the school, well, yes, the joint meeting is scheduled to start at six. We'll start after.
Gotcha. In that meeting, during that meeting, they will present final numbers?
So, they're gonna, essentially, yes, they're gonna present, here's the proposal, here are the figures, and we'll have the opportunity to review that and ask questions. And we hope to have that information on the fifth. They're still gonna be compiling it probably up through the end of next week.
So, we have the opportunity before the meeting to see it?
That's the intent, to try to get it to you on the fifth.
Good.
Just one facilities reminder, Meredith passed out or sent, emailed a spreadsheet to all of us after the last meeting, so we can rate individually the alternatives. So, if we could get that in sooner rather than later.
All right.
It's a, it's a hard one, it's a hard one to do.
I, I, and actually, I was thinking that we could do it together, 'cause it is, it's hard to, as me, just, you know, whine that stained glass archway.
Yeah.
It's really a gut check. You know, it's not binding at this point. It's really trying to get a collective sense of what emerges as priorities, and then there is time, and the intent is at, at a subsequent meeting to really dig into that a little bit more.
It's a first, first look.
I like being in my own little world. All right, shall we go over the draft calendar then?
Certainly. So, in your packet is the draft calendar for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. It looks virtually identical to the calendar for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, with the one exception of schools starting after Labor Day. So, the first proposed day of school in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen would be Tuesday, September fourth. Sorry, Catherine.
I know. But in that, but that, I mean, we have to open the doors September fourth.
We do.
That's, but that gives you time to do everything.
That, let's hope.
And then I noticed that we don't have no, we were talking about no school November, but that...
No school November.
There was, we were talking about having more than a few days off in November.
Correct, and that, that was in the hours model proposal, and we, in conjunction with the union, have gone back to a, a days model in, in accordance with the teacher contract. So, for next year, we're proposing a days model that has one hundred and eighty-one student days. Start of school would be September fourth, five professional development days, and three of those actually occur on election days, state election days, the state primary, the November election, and then the, the March election, because we won't have our gym available as a voting place this coming year. So, those three were at the request of the town, and then you see our four early release days and two professional days for teachers prior to the start of school.
So, wasn't the union looking at the hourly option too, what became of that?
So, this is the calendar that the association adopted. The hours model was not adopted.
What does that mean? Is there any, was there any feedback on it, or were there concerns, or?
I don't, I don't know if Amy wants to speak to that at all, or not. You don't need to.
You don't need to.
Well, the one thing that I, I will just point out is, one of the things that is an issue with the students wanting to the hourly model is if there are a tremendous number of snow days, then we could have a week's worth of professional development days at the end of the school year, which is difficult to make those beneficial once school has ended, and, you know, have a whole, whole week of them. So, in trying to figure out how we could maintain as close to our contract where we wanna be on our contracts and not have people here for an additional week, and kind of look at each other and say, "We really wanna sit with you for another whole week after school ends." So, that's...
Well, plus you won't be able to be in the schools, technically.
Well, we would, could.
Yeah, okay.
It wouldn't be as safe for the students, but we, that was the, probably the majority.
Does that cut off then the possibility of altering the school year to accommodate further... further time in the summer for construction potentially?
Well, we, again, starting after Labor Day buys us some time at the beginning of next year and I would say that our end date for the 2018-19 school year would be kind of where it is this year, depending on how weather, how weather plays in. And then, you know, we have the opportunity to look at that again as we move forward into the 19-20 school year with whether or not we want to start before or after Labor Day again and we have the opportunity to look at an hours model again next year.
Yeah, I would keep it in mind, I'm not a master of school calendars. I know there's a lot of moving parts and contract issues and busing and all, there's more than I can probably list here, but it's, if we can buy ourselves time, if there's common ground there, boy, you know, it would be good to do. If we could get those extra weeks, I mean, I know John Deloya has mentioned that time and again, and again, it's a very difficult thing to do and I thank the union for looking at it. But it may be, it may be, at the end of the day, it may benefit us more to do that than perhaps to adhere to the calendar. It's always good to have that extra time at the end than to be scrambling for it, you know? So, my two cents, so we should keep talking about it.
Any other questions about the calendar? Then we can move on to approval of minutes for February 1st, February 3rd, February 8th. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of minutes for February 1st, February 3rd, February 8th. Do I have to describe?
Just a modification there. Under the audit, unmodified was not in quotes, and should it be in quotes so that that clarifies that that was a term of art, as I understood it, for the audit? It was just, it was an importation marks.
You know, where that is on the page?
No, I was.
Page two?
Should it be on page one or it's not? It is. Uh, page two, under C, the fourth line down. Is that?
They confirm the appropriate process was followed, the auditor's opinion was unmodified.
Was that a term of art?
It is a term of art. It's fine either way, but that would be an easy change.
I mean, is it, are they saying basically that the auditor is saying he's not modifying the audit?
That's good, yeah. So, when they say that, that's just how they say it.
That's a good thing, right.
It's a term.
It is a term of art.
And then the dates for the meetings were all February instead of March meetings, I think, on there.
Voting in February, it'll be the 22nd, no meeting on the 14th, voting March 13th.
Yeah, but they listed, Kim Shelton says, the second board meeting in February will be on the 22nd, there will be no meeting on the 15th, voting will take place on March?
March 13th.
March 13th.
I think that's okay.
Okay, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the New Market Street Board unit's February 1st, 2008, February 1st, 2008, non-public. February 3rd, 2018, deliberative session, and February 8th, 2018, School Board.
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
Thank you. So, first from Al Zink, a second from Mike Kennison. All in agreement, say?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that was approved. And Al, do you have the manifests?
I do. Like, I make the motion to approve the 20218 payroll and AP manifest, payroll manifest in the amount of $532,000, $116.10, accounts payable, the amount of $230,567.53. The bond payable manifest in the amount of $61,634.11 for a total of $824,547.11.
Second down motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we do that? All right. We can do the second reading for the JLCF Wellness Policy Read. Any questions about that?
I did have a question. The wellness plan, what kind of measurable targets will the superintendent set?
I had that same question.
And how will they be measured?
The committee really works on those pieces and with Lisa Kup's departure, there has not been the regular schedule of meetings that there have been in the past. So, that is one of the things that I've had some conversation internally about is how do we get that back up and running this spring even in, with Lisa's absence so that we can set and establish those goals? So, this will be our spearhead, our efforts to move that forward.
And the next question ahead was, if a child needs an EpiPen, do the parents provide that EpiPen when there's a known need for it?
When there's a known, yes, but we have them as well in our nurse's office for emergencies because our nurses recognize anaphylaxis.
And what is onsite, especially in the case of a child who has a known need? Is onsite in the classroom, in the nurse's office?
Sorry, where are you?
Ooh, page, my note here is that that's page 18F.
Parents provide school and EpiPen to be kept onsite at all times and to be sent on field trips. So, it's kept typically in the nurse's office.
In the nurse's office.
On field trips, obviously, it is in the possession of the chaperone accompanying the students.
And my last question was, how often is the walk to school day? Because people know I walk to school.
Yes, so, again, that happened pretty consistently when Lisa was here, has happened less consistently this year. And we had some meetings, I think I shared last time I was here with Library Health to talk about some ways that they might partner with us around wellness. The state actually has made a, I think they're Title IVA again, or Title IV grant that is opening up in April that will provide schools with up to $30,000 for what they consider small projects. Wellness is a targeted area that falls under that. So, we are looking at how we might apply to use those funds and target some wellness initiatives. So, again, one of those pieces where bringing that committee together to look at it would be helpful. No one, no one else really stepped up to take that on, but it is something that we could work with. You know, at the time that Lisa was running at Parents Association at the elementary school was really helpful in walking and a lot of parents walk their kids to school. There are a couple of days, I think, that are kind of nationally identified as walk to school days, but we set our own in the past.
We had ride your bike day as well. All right, so that's just.
If anyone out there is looking to coordinate that, we would welcome them.
What are your requirements for that? If you were looking to coordinate the walk, walking or?
To help with the walking or biking.
Gotcha, all right.
Yeah. That you are an approved volunteer and if you're not, we can help you become an approved volunteer.
So, we could look into going into a non-public or we?
Do you want to vote on the wellness policy?
Absolutely. I didn't know this was the final read.
This is, yes.
The final read. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the policy, JLCF Wellness Policy.
So, move?
Second.
First by Ingrid, a second by Mike Kennison. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, yes, now we should. Now we go into non-public.
Under?
I'm gonna have Ms.
Pulling that right out for you.